Funding year 2021 and 2022 are represented in line item 351-900, which is why you see $261,584 in revenue for 2023. Just know that the money that was awarded in 2021 has not been expended yet. That will begin to be expended in conjunction with the 2022 appropriation as construction begins in 2023.
So, any questions about the CDBG funding? Again, that's sort of a money in, money out, and it's really more decided with the determination of which projects we deal with this case, portion of the inner loop, which really all ties in with Stormwater. There are a lot of things that tie together there on Washington Street, or will. Takes us to Fund 35, Liquid Fuels.
Liquid Fuels is money that the Borough receives from the state. It's money that's collected every time you fill up your gas tank. It's funded through the state, through our gas taxes. In 2023, the state estimate for the Borough to receive in motor vehicle fuels taxes is The Borough has been consolidating multiple years' worth of liquid fuels funds in anticipation of significant roadwork as it relates to our capital improvement plan, probably beginning in the year 2024 and 2025. So if you go to the expense side of this, you'll see that there really is not a whole lot spent, other than routine maintenance on some of our traffic control devices, tune of $31,500, obviously snow ice removal from streets, around $25,000. That will go up and/or down depending on the severity of our winter season, street lighting repair, minor bridge maintenance, and perhaps paving some alleys or small roads in the next year. Total expenditures in 2023 is expected to be just over $87,000. So obviously, you'll see that we'll have a surplus in this fund as it relates to the expenditures, we'll have revenue exceeding expenditures in 2023. If you remember, in every month, I update the council on the balance in the checking accounts. Right now, there's about a $450,000 balance in the liquid fuels account. That's money in the past years that we've been banking, but not using in anticipation of the larger projects in 2024 and 2025.
This was something that we really banked in when we were undergoing all the projects related to the bond issue.
Correct.
So, starting to expend a little bit of that. That takes us to Fund 40, revolving loan fund.
Yeah, revolving loan fund, Fund 40, again, is the money that was... It started by a grant that, which was used for Kenny's, to provide the provision of shopping for groceries in Gettysburg Borough. Kenny's has repaid that loan. The Borough Council has decided to turn that repayment of that loan into a revolving loan fund. This was used by several businesses during COVID, where we had two loan programs. One was for, specific to restaurants. The other was to other small businesses that might have been struggling to make ends meet during the pandemic. So where you see miscellaneous revenue, line item 389-632, in the amount of $16,450, that's the repayment of those loans. That money's been coming back all year, and next year will be the second year of full repayment of those loans that went out. The larger $50,000 loan that one of our restaurateurs took advantage of will begin to be paid back mid-year next year. So that represents the revenue side of this. There actually are no expenses anticipated in 2023. That doesn't mean there won't be, because council has authorized the raising of some grants, not grants, zero-interest loans for property owners if they want to improve their properties. So that program is up and running. We stand ready to loan those funds out, but to date, we have not had any applicants.
Questions about the revolving loan fund? This is kind of where the easy ones sort of stop. Why don't we do an explanation of each 96, 18, and 30, knowing that we may be revisiting them? All of them very much intertwined with Fund 1. What we decide to do with the general fund will impact each of those, so just kind of be aware, these are likely to see another look.
So, it's almost circular, if you will. Fund 96, in significant ways, helps fund Fund 1. And then, in turn, Fund 1 helps fund Fund 18 and Fund 30. So, ARPA, Fund 96, if you remember, is the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. This is the $3.1 million that the Borough received in relief during the pandemic. Through a deliberative process last year, council has determined the best use of those funds is for essentially the provision of government services. That's, I put that in quotes, because that's specific language in the authorizing legislation and the ARPA legislation for the provision. ARPA funds can be used for the, quote, "provision of government services." So to a large extent, ARPA funds are reimbursing significant chunks of expenses in Fund 1, and that will continue until the ARPA funds are expired and by the legislation that has to occur by December 31, 2026, which is why the next couple of years tends to be a fairly easy budgeting endeavor. So, I say that only to remind everyone that you need to be cognizant of the fact that in 2027, ARPA funds will not be available to help balance a general fund budget. To another extent, that we are running surpluses because of the assistance of ARPA money, Fund 18 and 30 is the recipient of transfers from Fund 1. Fund 18, Capital Projects, is specifically related to this book. This is online for the public to see. This is the capital improvement plan from 2022 to 2026. This is the document, if we remember, last summer, we went through a lengthy discussion on the capital projects that the Borough would like to begin to implement over the next five years or so. So anything in Fund 18 is essentially what you would be classifying as restricted funds. So if there's money sitting in Fund 18, it's specifically earmarked to help fund something in this book. In other words, those funds in Fund 18 cannot be used for anything other than the designated allocation in the capital improvement plan. Fund 30, on the other hand, is exactly as it's defined, it's reserve. These are unrestricted funds, so any money that's put in there can be allocated to anything in the capital improvement plan, or whatever else council would decide to use those funds for. So that's the more flexible capital fund, if you will. So I think that's a brief explanation of 96, 18, 30, and Fund 1.
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, our capital reserves get their funding generally from the general fund. So, I mean, while we are dealing with several different funds, realize that, for the most part, they all see their revenue from the same source, when it all comes down to it. So when you look at last year, transferring $410,000 into capital reserves, that came from the general fund. What a lot of this is allowing us to do, with 18 in particular, we're looking at some of those larger projects. I would say there are things on there that we would do during normal times, if this funding did not exist, and then there are things that we would have to have much more lengthy discussions about.
Right.
And a lot of this deals with attempting to set ourselves up to leverage for grants that hopefully will come. If they do not, then a lot of that will set back, I would assume, for a later time and another stab, and really, we're talking about Baltimore Street. So, I guess I'll walk a bullet through Fund 18 for the public's benefit. Things that we would do, probably almost no matter what, we have a line item for $120,000 for bridge maintenance, which needs to occur. The line item for roads and alleys, the one that says engineering roads, 439-313, that's specifically related to the Baltimore Street project, and funds will have to expand in order to make this work with our potential grant projects.
Right. Do you want me to give a little more granular detail on that line item?
That would be fine, yeah.
Okay.
That's okay.
So, specific to 18, 439-313, engineering roads, the Borough has a local match commitment in total of $313,480. Half of that will be spent in 2023. That's why in the yellow hash there, you see $156,740, that's half of the 313. This is specifically related to the FLAP grant that the Borough received, federal land access programs of $800,000. So that $800,000 combined with the local manager 313 will do all the engineering and design and engineering of the Baltimore Street project, and that begins in earnest in 2023. In 2023, assuming that council approves the resubmission of the RACE grant in 2023, then we're going after construction dollars for the Baltimore Street project, and that'll be a $14 million grant application.
So essentially, when we had excess funds last year, the ones at capital reserves, this year, we're moving similar quantities into capital projects, and then that's how we were able to do some of these projects, where I know there's a lot of concern about ARPA and how we use those funds and costs that will continue after 2026. Some of these items that we're using those excess funds for from last year are one-time projects, okay? So we won't have to engineer Baltimore Street, you know, in 2027. So just understand that we've... The way this has been done is kind of interesting, because they won't let you use ARPA funds for that, but you can use your own tax funds for it. So we use ARPA funds to pay for the employees that we had had to furlough, that we're now able to have back, or positions that were just left vacant, and that allows us to use tax funds to hopefully leverage them for more federal tax dollars and bring more of that back home here in Gettysburg. I would argue that the, some of the things under streets and alleys, we would probably need to do anyway. 413, pardon me, 439-378, those are your street preservation projects, which is the bulk of that, would have to happen anyway. $167,000, if we don't preserve them, we won't have them. And then, you start to see the inner loop pop up again, and is this question on that, is that grant connected, I'm assuming?
Partially. So the 80,000 is the Borough's local match.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah. There is another match from the Stormwater Authority as it relates to the inner loop project, and then there is a DCNR grant that was awarded in the amount of $250,000, I think, without having to look that up. And there is still a funding gap that needs to be figured out, and our plan is to apply for TA Set Aside, which is another grant program, Transportation Alternatives, TA Set Aside through PENDO to fill that. And then, the engineering, like in Baltimore Street, will be done in 2023, which is represented here in these expenditures, and then, assuming we get the TA Set Aside, we'll have the money for construction.
So just again, this 80,000 is connected to a lot of other items and other budgets to make that larger project happen, which deals not just with, I would call, pedestrian and bicycle accessibility, but also addresses the stormwater problems we have on Chambersburg Street and a lot of other things we just have to deal with.
And ADA. That was, this is the project where we just talked about CDBG.
Right. There are a lot of things that that connects to, that essentially, you can't delete that 80,000 without touching a lot of other stones at the same time. The last two items there basically deal with the garage, and that's an every-other-year expense.
No. We did not do any maintenance in the garage in 2022, so two years' worth of maintenance is scheduled in 2023.
So, this is where we start, and it doesn't have to be final, but we start to get into the moment where I kind of have to know if there are any inklings about changes that people would want to start to make on anything. I mean, to me, this seems kind of like straightforward, but at the same time, we're talking about large dollar figures, and, you know, we can always return, but things start to interconnect, and, you know, if you feel strongly...
The interconnection is the difficult part, because all these... It'd be easy if all this was being cut from the same checkbook, but they're not, and that's just the way our funding streams are set up legislatively.
And I think I kind of appalled the group, but at the same time, one year, I sat here, and we cut like $100,000 of streets. So, just, we just decided we weren't going streets that year. So, now would be a good time to speak up, if you feel that way. Okay. So, does that get us to Fund 1? It might.
You want to tackle debt service? Debt service is really, really...
We could, that's pretty, that's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't fund this, we default, and that's a problem. Our debt service for 2023 is scheduled to be $555,466 in principal and interest payment of $83,319. Couple bucks here and there for our folks over at DAC Bond, who assisted us with getting the general obligation bond in both 2010 and 2016. So, debt service, total expenditure in 2023, $640,360. And the good news there is, 2023 is the last year of financing the general obligation bond of 2010. Just an FYI, 2029 is the last payment for the general obligation series 2016.
Yep.
And are those the only two we have out?
Correct.
Cool.
Now, we have a PIB loan, which is rolled into these debt service payments.
Sure. Yeah. But those are your large dollar figure.
Yep. And the PIB loan, just to remind everyone, was for the East Middle Street project of 2015.
Okay. Shall we start with revenue, explain where we're at?
In Fund 1?
Yep. A lot of it functions on a more or less status quo type arrangement.
Yeah.
Part of the American Rescue Plan involved a provision where you could not lower taxes below the, I forget the term they used for it, Charles, the, I always call it like capture year.
Yeah, base year.
The base year, which was 2019, essentially what they called a normal year, right? 2020 was anything but. So that's why the millage rate sets as it does. So, of note, there is no scenario where you could lower that without sending those funds back, FYI. But this is based upon a status quo millage rate of 4.177.
Right. Which is lower than the millage rate that was assessed in 2021. If you remember, council did not know, the world did not know what you were dealing with in the fall of 2020, as we were preparing for 2021's budget, so knowing we didn't know what we didn't know at the time, council passed a significant tax increase that year. And just as a reminder, you gave half of that back for 2022, just so everyone knows that 2022 actually saw a tax decrease. So these property tax here in 301, as President Heiser mentioned, is status quo numbers. They're a little higher than the real numbers projected in 2022, simply because these are closer to what we actually collected in 2022. Let's see, the budget 2022 was 1.957. We're envisioning 1.966. It's closer to what we've actually collected this year. No changes in occupation, essentially, 305. Act 310, Act 511, taxes. This can fluctuate depending on a couple factors. One of our largest revenue streams in this category is amusement tax. Again, the Majestic Theater is the largest payer of this tax, and they do so voluntarily. I also want to point that out, because they're owned by the college, they are not obligated legally to do that, because they're a tax-exempt organization. But knowing that, to be good neighbors, they voluntarily take that burden on behalf of the municipality. As of this date, unless maybe Vice President Moon has, because that's where you work, I don't anticipate a big dip in the numbers from the Majestic Theater. And I know our other areas are quite robust this year, as it relates to amusement tax, our museums, our ghost tours, those types of establishments are those that remit this tax. So with that, 1.029 million is our anticipated number in 2023. Stop there and go through those first few departments in revenue, if anyone has any questions, concerns, or thoughts.
On the mechanical device tax, is that something that code enforcement works on? Are they inspecting businesses for mechanical devices and making sure that they're permitted?
They can certainly look at that. It's not, I don't think Pete has been into establishments to actually count the devices. We are in a better position to enforce this more readily than we have been in the past. It's kind of been more of an honor system in the past, but now we have a dedicated staff member that could take care of that. I would note that that has been declining in recent years. We'll just have to keep an eye on it for 2023.
I know that some places have taken them out.
Right.
When it started to catch attention.
Yep.
Wasn't worth the point of having them. At least one that caught my attention was 331-100, the district magistrate. We saw a major dip in 2022 compared to past years.
Oh, you're...
I'm sorry, I'm way ahead, probably.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all right. You're up, the fines and forfeits.
Yeah, I'm a page, okay. So sorry, business license and permits, I saw a lot of status quo.
Yeah.
It didn't really surprise me.
Exactly.
Now, cable franchise fees, does that impact our PEG expenditure on the other end?
I kept the PEG expenditure the same.
I'm trying to remember how that's calculated.
Yeah, there's a formula. I don't see a huge change in our cable television franchise.
Okay.
This year, I mean, that's a quarterly payment we get from Comcast, and it really hasn't fluctuated much in the last year.
And we take the full 5%, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The business licenses was provided by estimates from our planning department, based on this past year's experience primarily. Don't really see a reason to expect something different next year at this point.
In the new regulations for vacation rentals, Airbnb's, whatever, are we going to be permitting them and collecting the rooming tax?
So, collecting the tax is a responsibility of the county. We do our best to inform the county when we learn of one that might not be participating in that tax program.
It's aggregate, too.
Yeah.
My understanding is the county does not even get an itemized bill.
Then that would show up to us in the form of pillow tax.
Like, they just get a lump payment from the companies, and they're not, it's not itemized as to what venues they're collecting from.
Interesting.
Apparently, that is the law in Pennsylvania.
Hmm.
How could you possibly know?
Hmm?
So you're telling me that like, a certain vendor issues them a bill, or issues them a check?
My understanding is that the law in Pennsylvania is that it is contingent upon the companies running the services, so your Airbnb, or your Verbo, or whatever, to report to the county. According to our records, you are owed, you know, X number of dollars, and they get a check for X number of dollars with no itemization of what short stays those are coming from.
So there's no way to know if anyone's complying or not?
Exactly. The county has to take these companies at their word, and that's what the legislature has determined to be appropriate.
I'll have to look that up.
And that's the issue that Harry is working with Tom King, because Steinware's having problems with that, no itemization.
Yeah, it's crazy.
It's a little nuts. Apparently, it's not this way in all states, but it's the way they do it in Pennsylvania.
Imagine that.
So to your question about 331-100, these numbers are reallocated based on our experience in 2022. If you go to the bottom of this department of 331, you'll see that, in the aggregate, the number is very close to what we expected in 2022. So we forecast 307 in 2022. Based on our experience this year, we're forecasting 316. So I just wanted to point out, the bottom line in this department's very close, even though some of these granular ledger account numbers might have significant differences from where they were in 2022.
Right. I mean, a lot of this seems to be dependent on the behavior of private citizens.
That's correct.
Right. And if everybody's really well-behaved this year, we'll see a dip there.
And that is correct.
Cool.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
So, does anyone want to dig down a little more in any one of those line items?
The license and permits you're referring to?
License and permits.
I'm sorry.
322, we skipped that one.
Oh.
Sorry. Yes.
I'm having some trouble matching everything up with. I thought you were speaking about those altogether. You're speaking about fines and forfeits altogether.
Yeah. Yeah, I, if we want to go back to 322, we can talk about that.
That's okay. Let me, so we're still, well, okay. Oh, I see what was done, okay. Now that makes a lot more sense.
Can you explain, please, Charles, the highway occupancy permits?
So, yeah, if anytime you want to dig in one of our streets, you need to get what's called an HOP, Highway Occupancy Permit. That's inclusive of several things. When you build that, at the end of your dig, the...
That's what you were talking about last week.
The minimum review fee, street closure fee, degradation fee, and inspection fee.
Thank you.
And then our Public Works Department does those inspections, and depending on the size of the project, will depend on the size of your invoice. And then, this money is essentially reimbursed. It's something that comes back to the Borough through... It's something that comes back to the borough through the services provided for the HOP.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I was trying to see why the fines and forfeits behave the way they did. It's because you added two line items.
Yes.
You have a habit of doing that.
Trying to get a little more granular to get a better handle on.
Everything gets a lot more detailed, but it also gets a lot more confusing sometimes in terms of why is this doing what it's doing? Oh, it's gonna be helpful, I know, but it's kind of like over time.
Staff always struggles with the level of detail. Some councils want to look at things in a little more granular. Other councils want just aggregate numbers. I always argue that some detail is better than less.
Right, yeah, but if you put the parking fines and the police fines, which are new line items together, you essentially get the discrepancy.
Right.
So that makes a lot more sense.
Is there any fines and forfeits categories that folks have a question on?
331-210 restitution. This is something we can budget for, or?
So we budget because there are convictions. Vandalism would be a case in point where a juvenile defaces something at the garage, which happens pretty much every year.
Sure.
Restitution is small increments every month of that payment coming back to the borough to fix that problem. So we have to fix, we have to outlay the money early on to solve the problem, but then we're going to get that money back per court order.
Got it.
In the out years.
Yeah.
It is a little difficult to predict this number. Fortunately, it's a fairly small number, but this has been a consistent number pretty much for many years at this point.
Okay, thank you.
341, simple, it's just interest on CDs and checking account. Department 342, rents and royalties. This is our Verizon Small Cell Tower lease that we have with them. That's consistent at 39,000 every year.
Where are those antennas located?
Everywhere.
All the traffic signals. Yeah, if you look at our traffic lights, you'll see a little.
Little thing.
Cylinder.
It's not the ring of antennas around the water tower or anything like that?
No, no, that's not, no, they're specific to our streetlights or our traffic signal lights.
Okay, thank you.
You'll see them if someone hits a traffic signal, and then you'll notice them because they get damaged like everything else.
I would point out, we're one of the few municipalities that are benefiting. We're one of the few municipalities that are benefiting from that because we negotiated that lease before the new cell tower law was enacted by the state legislature.
Yep.
Which then, yeah, curtailed.
How long is that lease?
10 years with automatic renewal for another 10.
All right, all right.
Chief, do you want to talk to the public safety grant, the 450? I just put this in as a placeholder. It's kind of been there for many years and.
I'm not exactly sure which grant they're referring to when it's federal grants, public safety, other than the only federal grant for public safety I can think we get consistently, now the payments back from aren't consistent, we're consistently eligible, would be the bulletproof vest grant, and it should be a little higher than that. The federal government reimburses through the Bureau of Justice Assistance half the price of the Kevlar bulletproof vest for the police department, and they will replace a vest every five years. Generally, we're buying like two or three vests a year, and they're, well, they're a little more than $1,000 now, but for simplicity's sake, let's say they're $1,000. So if we're buying three that year, that grant should be $1,500. I would guess that that's the grant that's going in that category because I haven't honestly seen the BVP grant anywhere else, the income from it in the budget. And we're usually, I think we're collecting 20 and 21 maybe this year, so we're a few years back on that, and it's still eligible. But I would guess we should probably bump that to about 15, in all honesty, Charles, if that's what is going in there.
And then we have corresponding expenses with the vest. Do you know where they fall?
Yeah, the vest expenses are going to go under, I always carry them under the officer's uniform allowance.
I was going to ask who's uniform allowance, okay.
So uniforms and equipment, they'll come out of there. But again, I may be incorrect on that, but I've not seen the BVP grant come back in, the revenue side of that, anywhere else in the revenue stream. So I'm thinking that's where it is because the rest of our grants are all currently our state grants.
There's no revenue showing up there for the year to date.
Pardon me, ma'am, sir?
There's no revenue showing up there for the year to date or for the last two fiscal years.
See if I can sort that out.
Is someone applying for those grants?
Yes, we do every year. We're, and we actually just figured out, cut through all the confusion, and we are applying and getting the money back into the police department now, which we'll turn over to Tammy when we get the check. But there was some confusion as to who was getting those. I think that the finance director was getting them when she was here, and then when she was not here, there was some assertion that Twig was getting them, although Twig says, no, I was never getting them. They were got by finance. So we basically wiped that slate clean and reinstituted the program through BJA. And I know that we are expecting the 21 allocation back. It's been applied for, they won't tell us when it's coming. So we're back in 21, and I believe the grant, the dollars are still available for 20 yet. But we have applied and are eligible every year, and that part we had, we just didn't realize nobody was collecting these funds back. So what we do at the beginning of every year is we say, we're going to need X number of vests for replacements. And that's where we come up with the two or three. So we put that in every year, and we get approved for the dollars. It still shows up in the system, we're approved for the dollars, and it'll stay in there. And I don't know the requisite number of years back, but I know for sure we applied for 21, and it's in the pipeline right now to get that money back. And I just checked with the officers dealing with that last week, and I said, look, if we're still eligible, get $20 back, let's get that in. So, and then we won't be able to get $22 back until we get 23. So it's always at least a year behind, if not more.
But we haven't received any checks in the last three years.
No, because nobody knew who was getting them. We thought that the finance was getting them, and finance thought we were getting them, so that was lost.
But it turns out nobody's getting them.
Turns out nobody was getting them, but we are eligible back to 20. I think the last time we got one, I think we got one in 2019, I'm not 100% certain.
Yeah, the only year I have an actual looking back is 2018.
2018?
Which I don't know if that means, as you're discussing, like the 2018 grant, or is that when we perceived it? It's probably when we received it.
Probably.
And that was for $1,647, but I don't have anything going my way back to 2015.
Yeah. Right. This is, this is one of these, we knew, we need to follow up on this. It's a line item that's, obviously, we've gotten money in the past, but something's happening in the last few years that we're not getting money, so.
It is definitely set up that we should receive the funds now. We have that in place.
That'll go for, because we're on a cash basis now, so that won't count for the year in which it was applied for. It'll just show up as money collected in that year.
And if we don't apply it, we're just leaving the money on the table then, right?
Sounds like it.
Yes.
It sounds like it's been a lot longer than just a few years, like, I'm looking at like maybe eight years.
Is that you're saying that application was not submitted for 20 yet?
The application to say we're going to buy X number of vests was submitted, so that money's hanging there, and I think we're still eligible to get 20's number. We've always submitted to say we're going to buy this number of vests, and that amount of money has been reserved for us, but I don't think we have submitted to get that money. So we have corrected that this year going forward. And I'm hoping, well, we should get 21's. As I said, 21's is in, 21's is in process. We've submitted, and we should get, and I forget the exact total. It's right around $1,000, because I think we bought two vests in 2020.
And I'm thinking that that means, when we say 21, we're talking about the federal government's fiscal year 21 budget, probably.
Yes, yes.
I don't mean this to sound combative in any way, but is grant writing an office serial duty?
What's that?
Is grant writing an office?
This isn't really a grant writing, you apply, you put in, you put in the number of vests.
Okay, whatever you want to call it, is this an office serial duty, or is this something more for management?
No, it's a supervisory management duty, you have a supervisor that does that.
Okay.
Sounds like we're getting that squared away. So we used to have a line item there also for disaster relief that comes up.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't used that line item since the blizzard of 19, or 2016.
Yeah.
Blizzard, Jonas, that was the name of that storm, where we actually got FEMA money.
Started naming them, I remember that.
They started naming them, yeah. It's a form meteorologist, it's ridiculous, but they do it for television. Act 101, recycling grant. This is just really instructive based on what we received in the previous year. And so we estimate about $9,500 coming to us based on our tonnage of recyclables. This is going to be an interesting test year because we have a different waste hauler provider. So this is going to be the first year with waste management's reported tonnage as opposed to our previous hauler. So we'll see how that works out.
How does that work for the other haulers in town that are doing commercial recycling?
They are required to report their tonnage as well, and that's part of our submission to the state.
In a rescue mission?
They are required to report.
They need to report to Adams County, and we have about 20 haulers in town that we permit and collect their data.
20, that is always the high.
Pick on, you know, cardboard, food waste, metal, glass.
Oh, so you're dealing with like junk dealers and stuff.
Everything, yeah.
That's why.
Ah.
Anybody that's running scrap metal is supposed to report to them.
Okay.
Public utility realty tax is defined by the state, and that's estimated based on what they tell us. Public safety, this is another police grant. Do you have any?
Again, that would have to, if it's a state grant, it is most likely one of our traffic grants because they're the only state grants I think we currently have. But it would be more than 2,000. We don't know what we're going to get for a particular year. They do it again by fiscal year, our numbers just started up this year. So we have in total, we have a DUI grant that we get money from, so DUI enforcement grant. We have a buckle up grant, which is an occupational protection grant we get money back from. We have an aggressive driving grant that we get reimbursement from. And then we have a pedestrian enforcement grant that we get reimbursement from. And I'm not sure of the exact amount because it fluctuates, and we may end up getting more back than what they say because they have what they call enforcement silos that they put each of these in. And we get X number of dollars, but if somebody else doesn't use their money during that particular period, they'll send out a blast saying, if you can use this, we'll give you X number more dollars. And I think we're somewhere around $6,700 or.
Well, we're showing zeros here for the last two years, so that can't be.
And then it's not, it's going in somewhere else because we're definitely getting reimbursed from, on the public safety grant side. I don't know where it's coming back in at.
So we might need to research that line. If we don't have any revenue for five, six years, then we certainly can't include it in our.
I suspect it's being miscoded somewhere.
Yeah, that's what I'm kind of gathering here is.
If we have it, it's just sitting.
Try to get a sense of at least a few years, maybe three or four years. And, you know, is this relatively stable? Is this something that we can, we need to put a number to it? So can we try to put a reasonable number to it?
It generally doesn't, what they indicate us we're going to get generally doesn't fluctuate too much. It might go up a hundred, a couple hundred here, a couple hundred there. But what they tell us we're going to get and what we end up getting at the end of that period, it may be a bit higher just because of others that don't, like, we always, it seems, can get a lot more money back or a lot more money put into the pedestrian enforcement grant, let's say, because we use it and other places don't. So, you know, if they say you're going to get 6,000, when I say a lot more, if they say we're going to get 6,000, we may end up getting, with all the four grants together, maybe 7,500 or 8,000 total. So even though it's a little bit of difference, it's.
So in the scenario you're painting, I would say that we should be putting that 6,000 number in.
I would guess that 6,000.
A budget's a spending plan. If we get extra money and then we use it to expend on extra hours, then that's just how it is. We can't do the hours without the funding.
I try to track it through the overtime.
I know that it gets, with all the, well, some of the changes that we've made allow that to be done a little more efficiently. So maybe this will be something we probably should pay a little more attention to, how that money's coming in.
They have a very streamlined process as to how they're paying it back now, too. It's an electronic form the officers fill out, the supervisor acknowledges, and it submits right to the agency that sends that out, which is out of, I'm going to say York County. And then they reimburse off that form. So there's no special forms that Tammy has to send in anymore for that reimbursement. It's kind of a streamlined, automatic thing.
Right, I guess my concern here is actually more for Charles than for you, chief. It seems like we have a few line items here where we're assuming we're going to have revenue, but then we also don't have any revenue for several years. So can we really bank on the fact that this revenue can happen? Is this part of our revenue projections, or should it not be? I mean, are we seeing these grants show up in another fund? I'm not seeing mysterious $6,000 overages.
That's what we need to figure out, is if we actually do have the money, and it's just sitting in a different line item.
Yeah.
I think it's being miscoded. And that's, I mean, Tammy's doing what she's being told to do.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. No, I just.
So the department heads don't code their own?
They do.
Okay.
So that's, we just need to have Tammy sit down with chief or myself or whoever the department head is and.
I've honestly not since 2019 ever seen anything on the revenue side.
Okay.
I've never seen anything to code. The only thing I code going in is expenses. I've never seen.
So you're not getting checks in the mail that are addressed to Rob Glennie and coding them to the, right? So they're hitting somewhere else, right? But they're not getting coded to these line items. So if we're coming up with a total revenue projection based on line items that have been zero for four years, that's sort of problematic.
Yeah. Maybe we can zero them out now if you'd like.
I kind of have mixed feelings about the situation because they're such small figures in the grand scheme of things.
Oh, sure, sure.
You know, I really don't want to spend hours drilling down where the money was the past few years. However, I also understand Mr. Moon's concern that, you know, if we're overshooting $6,000 on another revenue item, that we don't want to also count in 6,000 here that doesn't exist. So you have to balance like the desire to be accurate with the, how much time do you want to spend to, you know, really hit the center of the target?
Well, and I would even say that really more of my concern is the way Patty put it. Are we leaving money on the table?
Are we actually getting the money?
Because we're not actually following up and collecting it. That would be, that would be bad.
Right, that's correct. I'm assuming that it's landing somewhere else, like Charles's too, and maybe it's not. Could be a mixed bag, it could have some landing somewhere else, some just being left. So we'll have to sort that out. I guess between Charles, the chief, and Tammy, we'll have to get that figured out. At least to make sure that, as we kind of said going forward, we're collecting what we can.
355-040, alcoholic beverage licenses, that's our historic, historically what we get. Something like a control board on those. State aid for pension and fire insurance premiums is numbers provided by the state. Estimates by the state. Pillow tax has been pretty stable coming out of the pandemic. I think we're on target to meet and probably surpass our projection for 2022 on that number.
I'm sorry, you're saying we'll surpass the one sixty-five budgeted item or the one thirty-eight projection?
We'll surpass the one sixty-five number for 2022.
Charges for services seem pretty stable.
Yeah, the big change here is all these reimbursement line items that we added mid-year. So a lot of these, to be frank with you, is somewhat a guesswork because we don't have longevity using these specific reimbursement categories. Twenty twenty-three will be the first full twelve months that we're assessing reimbursements in this particular granular level.
Yeah, here's where you start to see a lot of your, and going back, it doesn't look like they were there in the distant past, but you start to see your, some of your grants, your traffic grant is there. Three sixty-one, eight oh one, item B. Special events, of course.
How does eight oh one go up so dramatically?
You mean from previous years? All these were, these numbers were, the definitions of these line items are different than they were in previous years because we had to add a bunch of numbers. So essentially, when we added these, we had to scrap everything we did in the past and we're starting over. So that's why you're seeing some, what, numbers that don't make sense because...
Well, eight oh one's, that's the same as it was.
Yeah, eight oh one's got historic data.
Except that you asked how it went up so dramatically. So in 2022, we budgeted thirty-five hundred, now we're budgeting almost twelve thousand. I thought that was your question.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's Matt's question. I think that a lot of that's probably your traffic safety grants. I mean, I'm looking back at fifteen and sixteen, this used to be a three hundred dollar item because we didn't have those grants coming in. I think this is where these are appearing. I was just talking about those a minute ago.
And some of this is because we went from accrual to cash.
To cash, that's right.
Or is it strictly the drug task force reimbursements and the traffic grant reimbursements?
Well, that's all going in there, yeah.
So reimbursement, special police services. So these are grants we didn't receive in previous years at these quantities or...
So we should be getting, this year, I just pulled the stuff up from the state, we are allocated initially fifty-two hundred dollars total for traffic enforcement grants. But that will go up based on, and if you, if you look at twenty-one, we were probably allocated about the same in twenty-one. So reimbursement, special police services, we see the traffic grant there, and we got sixty-one, fifty-three back. We've probably got two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight hundred dollars additional based on each additional wave of them not using. So I'm thinking that's where those things that we were talking about in that state public safety grant are coming from. And whatever's in there now, we got some sort of grant from the state years ago for something. We just haven't used that since because I think that she's putting, by looking at these numbers, I think we're putting the reimbursements that we're getting from the traffic stuff in here.
That looks all like traffic to me for twenty and twenty-one.
Yeah.
Those numbers are consistent. I guess my question is, have we been receiving drug task force reimbursements? Or is that something that's kind of like when it happens, it happens?
That's when it happens, it happens, yes.
That's kinda what I'm gathering.
Yes, and the drug task force reimbursement this year hasn't been that high because there hasn't been a lot of drug task force hours worked. I'm just looking at...
That was what I kinda thought. That's, we have budget items kinda throughout that occur that way where sometimes there are things that aren't as predictable and we stick a number in. And that's what I think that thirty-eight sixteen for drug task force is. You know, it's hard to predict. Sometimes a number goes in, that's what I'm seeing. The other figures seem, Chief, we basically started doing those traffic enforcements more or less when you came here. You're about right. So like in twenty nineteen, when you came here.
March of nineteen, yes.
So, like, nineteen's actual numbers, to me, look like we did it for about half the year, which would be about right. If that makes sense, that we probably started it coming, started doing it when Rob came here because it was just over three thousand dollars.
And I think a lot of the problem, what we're seeing too, is maybe the way it shows up is, state does this on fiscal year, so like our grants just started in October for the new wave. So even though I'm adding up and saying for their fiscal year, we're getting fifty-two hundred, some of that fifty-two hundred, like, we have a DUI wave for Halloween of this year. So some of that fifty-two hundred will be expended in twenty-two, some of it will be expended in twenty-three. And I guess that I'm surmising that we'll get the same or right around the same on the next fiscal year. So next Halloween, we'll get the same amount of money, like I can tell you, for our DUI grant this year on Halloween. The wave period is ten fourteen to ten thirty-one, and we have eight hundred dollars to spend. That'll be spent this year, so if we are able to spend that, too, that's the thing. If we don't have the officers available to work those shifts, we don't have a part, you know, maybe we don't have as much part-time available to come in and work it or whatever. Now, we tend to, as I said before, we tend to be able to spend all our traffic enforcement money, but let's say for some reason that we don't have the officers available to come in and work extra on these DUI things. Maybe we don't get eight hundred dollars this way, maybe we get six hundred this way.
I don't, I don't think my, I'm probably not stating my question well enough. So the budget request for this year for this revenue item is eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars. That seems to be made out of a drug task force reimbursement of thirty-eight hundred dollars and a traffic grant reimbursement of seventy-nine hundred dollars. Neither of those is fifty-two hundred dollars. So I'm curious where those two numbers came from. Is that numbers that were given to us by the state? We were told this is the reimbursements you're going to be getting this year? Or how else did we come to that number if he's saying fifty-two hundred?
I don't know how we came up with those numbers because I didn't provide any of those numbers for the, again, I've not seen anything in revenue side.
And it's just, it's so dramatically higher than what we budgeted for last year. I'm curious where, how we reached those numbers.
Might be historical numbers, let me look.
It does not seem to be.
My assumption when this came through is what Charles was saying, that they were just historical numbers that we pulled.
I mean, all these categories are going to be estimates. It's not possible to...
Sure, I understand that, but this is six thousand dollars higher than the three previous years of historic data.
Forever, really. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
I have some idea of how that happened, this is conjecture. The drug task force may be broken down into overtime hours. And then since the overtime figure has increased, it may have been, it may have been a historic number of hours and then just determined by the overtime figure now as opposed to the overtime figure that was in twenty nineteen or whatever the case may be. So it may have gone up, but that's, I don't know how much drug task force reimbursement because that, that particular category, I have no way of telling how many hours that all the officers are gonna work. That's on call or if they develop an informant or if somebody across the county, you know, calls and asks them to assist.
Right.
Okay.
So you don't really apply for that money? It's participation with the county drug task force and the hours worked?
Yes, that's correct. It's, yeah, there's nothing applied for. If, we have two members of drug task force, if one of them works, we submit a sheet at payroll time or, I don't know when Tammy may submit it, but at some point in time, she submits a sheet because, you know, Officer A worked six hours for the drug task force to the district attorney's office, and the district attorney's office then reimburses us for their overtime.
So that's a very hard number to budget, kinda next to impossible.
Right, it's gonna call borderline impossible.
Sure, but the number that was budgeted is not even in, near relation to the historic data, so...
I understand your frustration. Right, let's move on. So this is sort of what I would term, a lot of it's kind of reimbursement land.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
This is kind of like reimbursement land, this whole area. Which does make it a bit difficult, but a lot of them are simply based on what has gone on in the past. The, one item that kinda stuck out for me with the code enforcement changes.
What line is that?
It's down at... Well, actually, there were, there were two. One was three sixty-one, eight ten, the fire department, is that a... What is that? Is that coming from the fire? What is that? The fire department pays in and then we pay the, we cut the check to the employees? Is that what that is, the business manager?
Exactly.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure because...
They submit their time sheets to us. We cut their checks, but the fire department pays us a reimbursement for their salaries and benefits.
Okay. Because that's been a... Because that number is interesting to me.
It's a number that's never shown up before, but if you look at our revenue to date number...
Yeah, oh, no, I know, but in another venue...
We don't have a budget anything, and then suddenly there's eighty thousand dollars showing up in that line.
I questioned that number in the other venue last year. How we're justifying that, but that's a separate matter for a separate body.
I can't hear you.
It's a separate matter for a separate body. I questioned the fire department, how they justify that.
Oh.
So that eighty-seven five is something, a number we were given by them?
That's a number that they're gonna give you, it's number in, number out. They haven't probably developed their budget yet. But when they do, they'll give you a number, and it doesn't really matter exactly what it is because on one side you'll see it come in, on the other side you'll see it go out.
Okay.
I imagine they're probably just getting ready to start that process now. The code enforcement, there was a line in three sixty-one, eight thirteen that caught my attention for where are we expecting, or where are we suddenly getting revenue for code enforcement?
We're gonna have to have Carly answer that question when she comes back from time in commission.
Okay. Otherwise, overall, the parking looks relatively similar from previous years. How many times we've discussed different ways to calculate parking, with the exception of the garage, which is up, but I would call that marginal in terms of an increase. It'll probably pan out over the whole thing.
I think that probably we're seeing the increase there. Is that having, do you think, to do with permits?
The garage?
Yeah.
I think she has permits under passes.
Okay.
And the garage is, I don't have my notes that Tammy told me, but the kiosks and I believe like the hotel guests and things like that.
It's been full all summer, like up to the roof, so I'm not surprised to see those numbers up.
Yeah, I mean, just with everything else in the, inside the parking, what basically amounts to parking revenue is more or less flat. That doesn't surprise me at all that we have an increase on one item, right? That's probably gonna end up being spread out a little bit more, but I have a lot of concern there. Actually, looking there with, between, somewhere in the parking, we're gonna have to have some sort of an understanding of what's happening because I'm looking at the passes and I didn't notice before that dipped so dramatically.
So I know we did find that things were being coded. Some were being put in the garage and some were being put in passes. And I think now, just when I did the revenue side for the budget this year, that's when we found out that things were being coded differently. So I think Tammy was trying to move things around to where they were.
Yeah, I do the math in my head, there were about eighty thousand up in other locations and about a hundred and eighty thousand low in there. So that means we're, overall with parking, we're figuring we'll be in a hundred thousand dollars lower across there. So that's something we need to figure out where or why. That doesn't jive.
Charles, what are the black things we see periodically?
The white items we're not gonna use next year.
Got it, thank you.
I would, I was a little conservative when I put these parking numbers in, a hundred thousand lower. If you wanna take them back up, I, given, given that we all know a recession's coming, I expect our parking numbers will take a hit next year, it's just a guesstimate, though.
Well, I guess with passes, I'm looking back and we've, through twenty fifteen, we've never had a year under a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
So those passes were part of the, were part of the hotel before. And now it's using the app, as it says right there on the garage mobile app. So those passes were going, the hotel guests were using passes, and now they're using the app.
Okay, so does that...
So that makes one, that makes that lower.
Okay, so then where does that, what's increasing as a result?
The garage line is...
Like two forty, right? Three six three, two forty?
Yeah, two forty is up.
But the discrepancy is you have one item dropping by a hundred and eighty and the other increasing by eighty. Thousand. That's a six-figure discrepancy.
Well, it's off compared to the budget, not necessarily compared to the usage, right?
Well, I don't, yeah, let's say I don't put a whole lot of stock in the, no offense, but I've never put a lot of stock in the forecast. Intended or not intended, I'm not even sure at this point. I look at, I always looked at past performance, like the actual, you know, what came through after the audits. Now, in all fairness with...
Past performance is how we got to one point two million this year. I think that's gonna be too high for twenty twenty-three.
In all fairness with cash accounting, it used to be, it used to be pretty difficult. So...
What we don't wanna do is budget a high number and balance a budget based on unreasonable parking expectations.
I know. I know how you budget, you run, you know, we're gonna run a surplus of one to three hundred thousand dollars and feel really happy about it, which is great, but at the same time, if we're, what we're doing to get there sometimes concerns me. That's all.
If you wanna take it back up to one point two, we can certainly do that. I'd just caution against it.
Okay, just be aware of it. Just be aware of it. That's something I think we should just be aware of. Anybody have any more thoughts on parking revenues or just wanna leave that as it is and revisit if we need to? Feel like we're gonna have a few more bites at the apple here to
Yeah, I mean, it's
Disside on that.
It's a hard thing to project for so many reasons. Like, I think you, you might be right. We might be headed towards a recession, but um, as we saw this year, we're an easy destination for the short, you know, one day trip, so
Right.
that might still be the way people vacation next year as well, so.
Food keeps going up, they might not vacation next year.
I don't know. I don't think we're heading for a recession. I think we're in a recession, but that's just
My kind of feelings, we're gonna do the same as we did this year.
I kinda feel like we're gonna hit those day trips still. But it is very complex. And I feel like we're trying to throw darts.
I mean, you can make, it's a plausible argument to take it back to one point two. I think we're gonna reach that number this year. Question is, is is that gonna become the new norm for us? The, the one point two is a record. We've never done that in parking before.
I see your point. My guess would be higher, but that's I think we should budget it the same.
I mean, another explanation of that is, could be that, you know, coming out of the pandemic, that so many people that, I mean, we are in proximity of four, or major urban areas and I think as people ventured forth, you know, they stayed closer to home and so that could be, that's one explanation. I'm sure there are others as well. But I wouldn't overbudget that. I would, I wouldn't take it back up. I'd be concerned that
Just so we remind, when, when we, when we started this conversation in twenty fourteen, when, when council hired me, parking revenue was four hundred thousand dollars. And so we've tripled parking revenue in the last eight and a half years. So just put that out there, that this, the parking program is very successful compared to where it used to be.
Meters were that in twenty fifteen alone, just the short-term meters.
Can you explain that?
The garage in twenty fifteen was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. The passes were a hundred ninety. It wasn't four hundred thousand dollars. It's dramatically more than that.
That was the number Nikki always told me.
Maybe so. I'm looking at the numbers sitting right in front of me. The same sheet I've been keeping all these years.
I'll have to, I'll have to go back and look.
Maybe the meters were. The meters were right around four hundred thousand for several years.
It could be, well, depends on how we were classifying in what line items too. I mean, this always goes back to line items that you're populating. I don't know if that excludes the hotel. It might exclude, that number might exclude the hotel. We'd have to go back and look.
But I mean, we've lost lots over the years too. Not many, well, a lot.
Oh.
A lot, I should say.
But we've added meters too.
And streets.
Yeah. So I think what I'm hearing is, is that leave it at one point one million for right now. And if we get a little more concerned about it, we can always revisit it. Okay, I'm hearing a difference is opinion and I think that's something we just put on our list to revisit if we need to feel compelled to. That takes us to Culture and Recreation, which I kind of don't quite understand the forecast on that one, but
Historically, people have given us some, some money.
Historically. I know, but yeah, I don't quite understand why your current year expectation is different, but everything else looks about right.
Pick a number at this point. I mean, you know, it, it, it's no way to predict this number, these, these values. It's just impossible to do. I mean, to be really conservative, I would be comfortable putting zeros there.
Yeah.
And generally, they always come along with
But at the end of the year, it's never zero, is the point I'm making.
They always come along with some sort of expenditure that doesn't appear yet. Right, I think at one time Wellspan essentially bought us a police car, so it's not about right. You know, we hadn't budgeted for that police car, I don't think.
So you're, you're expecting sixty thousand between now and the end of the year?
That was what I, that was my question.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't put the, that number, that
It's alright, I feel like you probably misplaced a decimal.
What's that?
Feel like you probably just misplaced a decimal there on entry, data entry. That's the forecast, it's not an actual number.
I didn't put anything in the forecast.
Oh, how's that compute?
The system does that. Based on something.
Is this system giving us money?
I thought I was criticizing him all these years. I was always criticizing the computer.
So yeah, we have seventy thousand. We've collected seventy thousand. I'd have to ask Tammy what it is.
Somebody gave us something.
We have year-to-date seventy thousand in corporate sponsorships. I'd have to go ask Tammy.
That number sounds kinda like that number.
That wouldn't be the signs on the ball fields or anything, right?
I, I don't know. It's total speculation without
That couldn't be donations that people give for the Brown House that like
No.
What did you read mainstream?
Halloween parade, something like that?
I, I don't know. I will have to ask Tammy.
We'll have to find out through account, what yeah, where that influx of
Should we keep making suggestions that are frustrating?
Well, I, I mean, I mean, in candor, I mean, it would, it's hard to, to answer these, I mean, there's hundreds and hundreds of line items here and to be asking specifics on each one
I'm only looking at the ones that look really out of place.
Yeah.
That's kinda how I generally look at it. If things look the same, or we're kinda behaving the same, I know that's not zero-based budgeting, but that's how I look at it. That's why I didn't get too concerned about that because the budget request looks fairly similar to past performance.
Right, because again, at the end of the every year, we've never had zeros in those line items, so you just put a conservative number in there expecting that it will happen. To be really conservative, we should put zeros in there.
And that line, the discrepancy though is under corporate donation, so
Yeah.
I'm, there's gotta be an easy explanation of that one.
You just have to look at
It's probably a single item.
And honestly, if we took a recess right now, I could do that. Okay, I could do that if we wanna take a recess and answer this question right now.
I'm okay with revisiting it.
Okay.
That's what people are okay with. Kind of the last item that hangs out under this, and I know that this was mentioned during the budget presentation, just wanna make sure everyone understands that this general fund does not reflect under the ARPA monies, which is kinda the last thing that really sticks out. This does not reflect the transfer in that is shown under the ARPA budget. And that's how Charles, that's how Charles explained it at the budget
Right.
explanation, but just realize that when we're done here and you're looking at final expenditures and revenues, that isn't in there.
Both aren't in there. ARPA and debt service are not in this yet.
Okay.
So ARPA, I would recommend not using more than seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Because once you reach seven fifty, you have to do extra audit work, which costs more money.
And that was something that, I said, I remembered for some reason in my mind that we had essentially taken the, the sum and divided it amongst the years.
That's correct. So we won't use more than seven hundred and forty-nine thousand.
I knew there was a reason
Right.
for doing that, and that's what it is.
Okay.
Because it's very simple to report on salaries and benefits. It all, you know, we basically assign, here's a police officer, here's some public works employees. Here's human resources and it all pops right out and it's real simple. Alright. So, the exception of a few questions, I think we're pretty good on revenue.
How do you wanna go through these?
Well, I think the first thing to, to talk about when we talk about expenditures is that we will not finish the general fund expenditures tonight. Just make sure that's really clear. I'm thinking of a target of around nine PM or so. If people feel different, that's fine, but Patty, I kinda need you to give me that, hey, what are you doing?
What?
So every once in a while, you give me that sign in these discussions, usually this time of year, you're like, hey, what are you doing?
I was gonna start by saying, in the interest of time.
In the interest of time.
Two minutes ago, but
So some of these early
I thought I would exercise, um, you know, summer strength.
Yeah. Uh, so some of these early categories are relatively predictable. One thing I did catch was we've reallocated a few things with the into the legislative department. And there almost seemed to be like some overlap between legislative and executive with the some of the things with travel and so forth. So I think I understand what we're, we're doing there. Just trying to be a little more specific about that. That's, that's what I was seeing. Which is understandable. I mean, the telephones and things, that's kinda how that works right now. I would I would say that a misdemeanor just stepped out, but I have no intention of using a borough telephone. Don't have no intention of. So that's one you could certainly reduce. Anyone else wants to do that, that's fine, but
I'm not, I'm not, I, I wasn't able to hear what you were saying.
The borough, like the cell phones. Jake had a cellphone. I didn't take that when we came on. I like, didn't we reallocate the physical hardware to someone like code enforcement or somewhere?
Yes.
Where we could use it, so unless
Yeah, there, there are three cell phones.
Unless there's a desire for the council president, vice president to have cellular phones, I don't personally see that.
See why
As, as necessary.
Oh, you wanna cut this off?
That thousand dollars, I would. I don't know if you feel differently or if somebody else feels differently and wants to you know, if there's any desire to change those roles or anything, this, normally we would not in this type of year, but that's fine if you do. But I, yeah, I had no intention. I use a Google voice number for that. If people need to reach me, they can reach me. And it doesn't go with me when I'm done.
Do you want a borough cellphone?
No, I do not.
Is there, is it necessary for like a secure line or something like that? Is that the rationale for?
I couldn't think there anymore security. Probably the rationale is probably right to know based.
That's exactly the reason you have them.
And basically, as long as you
That's why I'm like, like, you're gonna cut this, why?
Because if you don't text, there's nothing to write to know.
Well, that's fair.
That's why. I don't make it a habit to text about borough business. Really, at all. So like, if you don't do that, you don't have to worry about it. I know that we had someone who did make it a habit.
These were specifically put there to deal with, so no elected person is using their own personal device.
Yeah, I mean, the mayor's had one for many years.
Yeah.
But I mean, I'm not gonna have a bad belt type arrangement of a fire pager and a cellphone and another cellphone and something else.
What, it's not a role largely, I would just leave them in there in my, just at this point, I don't know.
Okay.
Unless somebody does it really strongly.
Just something I wanted to mention as we went by.
Sure. I mean, if we're
Just because sometimes when things go in the budget, then they get bought and I, please don't buy me a cellphone. Again. Okay. I think Jake was here for a whole, two months after it was bought or three months or something like that. You know, and then he had to resign, so don't go out and start purchasing things.
Well, yeah. Yeah. They're already purchased. I mean, this is for the data plan. This is
Right.
the monthly fee.
You purchased more cellphone?
No, no.
No, you have it. You have the phone. This is your monthly fee.
Where?
You don't have a cellphone?
No.
No.
I have my phone, what do you
Well, then what is this line?
I don't know.
Mother.
Something for you to check out.
Carly. That's kinda my question, cause like, no, no, I don't. Um, and please don't go buy one.
Does Mayor Freely have a cellphone?
She probably does. I say the mayor, the mayor historically has had a cellphone because it's, I don't know, just what we've done.
What is this line?
And I can see that because I think
Yeah, go back to
There are times when the mayor has to be reachable, I think, especially like you're doing things with special events and whatnot, I mean. I mean, Kaylee, I think it went back to, to Mayor Troxel had one. Because I don't know that he would have had a cellphone otherwise.
I actually had a go over his house a couple times to help him with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
That makes sense. Well, we'll definitely look into that.
I think that's how that kinda got that way and I'm fine with that, but I mean if there's a change later, I'm more than happy to, it's not about the money, it, for me, it's about, I would have no intention of using.
These, both these numbers are specifically listed on our monthly bill.
I've never had a hard
And, and they actually have council president and vice president on the Verizon bill.
Well, that's irritating.
Well, let's figure out how far that goes back and get that prorated because we've never used it.
We'll find the phones first.
That would be
I'm gonna call it, see what happens.
There's a number there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, like there's, the zeros are there because they're, they haven't existed. If that phone rings, I'm gonna
What phone rings?
The conference phone.
Joe's Bar and Grill.
In my address book, it says it's Pete Griffian's phone number.
Right.
See, that's where I thought that went was Jake had given me that phone. I told you, I'm like, I don't want this. Someone were hiring Pete. I said, give this to Pete. Because this is
So where's Matt's phone?
No, cause, cause Pete got Carly's cellphone. Carly used to have one that she shared with Deb. And when we hired Pete, he started carrying that, cause I called Carly and Pete answered it. But just now, I dialed this number.
Did you get Bob Krumrich?
Didn't exist when he was on.
The vice number is the planning cellphone. Another mystery.
And the one for president has never been configured, so.
And what about the vice president one?
That rings to Pete's phone.
Oh, okay.
Did he answer?
No.
He's gonna be calling you back though. Yeah, we'll see. Why are you calling me?
You can text him though, right?
Okay.
I like to keep him guessing.
So
Shall we move on?
Yeah, that's gonna be something to drill down into. Other day this month. Yikes. Huh.
So far down the mayor's number, the mayor's trying to do it.
Then these other items are TRISTA. We get contracted IT services.
Yeah, the serial numbers are all the devices that we currently use.
And then Con Ed or the conferences that are named there.
How many people we send to Pell Ross these days?
Usually three or four of us go.
And that's all it costs?
No, that's just That's just for anyone in council and the mayor to go. Pell Ross will also be budgeted in four oh nine and four ten.
Is that just registration fee? It's not hotels and
And four sixty? No, that would be for registration and hotels. So you have a conference lineup of six thousand for council and the mayor.
Alright, so moving to four oh one.
So the executive salaries for mayor, manager
Right.
accountant, HR coordinator and assistant manager.
Basically, everything we're gonna see for a few pages here are essentially, are essentially Basically, everything we're gonna see for a few pages here are essentially executive session, conversation points. Because our, everything from FICA and all that other, all those other items, taxes depend upon those salaries. They're all just calculations. I think we already know about our healthcare increases.
Yep.
So that, I mean, basically, 401 is essentially just all personnel. Because we capture the other related things, I think, and I wanna say like 40.
409.
Nine, yeah. So 403, that whole category deals with tax collection. Which is all based upon the amount the tax collector collects, correct?
That's correct.
So it's not a figure we even really set. It's a basis of what they collect. And then that gets us to 409, which deals with a lot of the other things that I would call central government expenses.
This is where you find your PEG appropriation, the 12,400 in line 218. Point of question earlier.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if there was a relationship between those or not. I often try to remember how we calculate such things.
The biggest line item to point out here would be, do we continue our relations with Michael Baker International to assist the Borough with its large grant applications in 2023? And that's under line item 310.
Yeah, say 409, 310 is a big item, but there are a lot of things happening there. Did they give us any kind of indication with, you know, for instance, like the RACE grants, a resubmission, is that, and I didn't look, is that figure less than what we paid for?
It is less.
I kind of assume, right?
Just so everyone knows, we had a debrief with Department of Transportation and it went very well.
Okay.
We have a very strong application.
And they had given us some tips, I think I remembered. Okay. How to strengthen things on, on the application. So I guess, is there, are there any of those items that, yeah, they're all capital improvement program or plan, I should say, items? Any of those that anyone thinks we should not pursue or that we should not engage with Michael Baker International for any reason? Or a similar firm for that matter, but it kinda makes sense to stay the course.
I mean, I know that there are people on staff who were very excited to partner with Michael Baker. Is there a reasonable timeframe, you know, municipality would work with a firm like that? And if we don't see results, do we say, you know, after X number of years, thank you, but this is not panning out for us? I mean, and I understand that that, that the grant writing is a process that takes, you know, multiple submissions. So, I mean, after three years, if you don't see a result, do you say, you know, thanks, but?
This is year two?
This is year two. I'm not quite sure how to answer that question. I understand your question. I don't know how to answer it. I don't know if there's like a best practice for those types of things.
And like, we're not gonna keep them on a retainer like this for 10 years if we never get any grants back.
Well, they're not on a retainer. This is fees direct for service, so.
I spoke poorly, but you know, I mean, we're not gonna budget this every year for 10 years if we're not getting any grants awarded. Like, that's just.
Sure.
I said, it's kinda like your engineer, your solicitor, or your labor attorney, every once in a while, you have to go and look to make sure that you're not being taken advantage of.
Do they search for other grants to, I mean?
Oh, yeah, they're always bringing grants to our attention.
See, that's the one piece that's really important with grant writers because they will, you know, if they're not getting, you know, a clear path one way, they have the knowledge to apply for other, other grants as well. And so it's, you like to, it's really kind of fun, it's an, you know, an avenue of fundraising, really. And to get money, you have to pay. I mean, so.
Well, I, I mean, I've always kinda looked at this as an alternative to employing someone. So we probably don't really have the volume to attract someone to be a grant writer that would have the knowledge
Oh, no.
across things in any way. So instead of doing that, we pay this fee.
Absolutely.
Or a series of fees, really.
For example, the RACE grant's a very technical application. There was an arduous cost benefit analysis that had to been, that had to be done using formulas that no one on staff has the ability to do. I mean, Michael Baker employs actuaries to do that type of work.
Yeah. Now, to me, it's kinda like, again, having a, well, like an engineer. There are certain things that Mr. Playball do for us. Then there are other things that, within CS Davidson, they have someone that can do it.
I mean, you're even seeing public school districts now using, you know, grant writers to try to, to get grant funds, so. And I see it as a, not necessarily a long haul. I mean, if you, if you come up, you know, with zero revenue over 10 years, then you need to reevaluate it. But, but there is amount of time that you have to put into that. And they can, they've got so many resources at their fingertips than, more than we could ever handle in-house.
I totally get that. I guess my question is, you know, we're a small town, right? So let's say we're spending $70,000 a year, you know, on average. And say we do this for five years, we're at, you know, $350,000. That's a, that's a worthwhile investment if they get us a $14 million RACE grant. But if after five years, six years, seven years, we don't have a $14 million RACE grant, are we, you know, is, does there come a point where you think, you know, okay, thank you for trying, but we would then move on?
Sure. I mean, I would think you would, just like we look at all the services that we, that we outsource. But, and maybe then you say, well, are there other firms out there that we would look at? You know? But to Charles's point, I mean, there's no way you could handle some of that, those grant applications in-house. I mean, it's.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. And I guess what I'm thinking about, you're kinda looking like the eternal investment. And, I don't know, my experience writing grants with the federal government is just that, it's so terribly unpredictable. It's not like, you know, the chief has his state bull profess grant where like the money you put in, here comes the money we have state fire grant you put in, here's your check. We don't know how much the check is gonna be, but you're gonna see it. And it's not that big. And then you put in for federal grants and sometimes you're gonna hit the proverbial lottery and many times you aren't. And a lot of times, you really have no idea why. A lot of it, I think, just comes down to the pool and who's applying as a peer. And that's, I think, what we probably saw with RACE. And there'll be times we'll hit and times we won't. You know, sometimes looking at the guidance, you can know that like, you know what, this probably isn't gonna work out. But many times, I can think of things we put in for, where it's like, wow, this should be a slam dunk, and it just didn't come through. So I don't know what to tell you, other than that. Like, Ms. Lawson responded to that pretty well. We could theoretically look at another organization somewhere down the road.
Yeah.
But at this point, we have to give some time.
They have a good reputation, so.
Well, and I think we're, I think in this year, we're probably saving some money, for instance, on that RACE grant because they've already done a lot of the work. We've already paid for that work. But that doesn't make that work product our property necessarily.
Right.
That's a whole nother part of that. The only kinda engineering outlier is the Welcome Center, which I think, when we look at planning and so forth, that's something you just kinda have to do. If you ever wanna do it, you have to start to engineer for it. There is a new line item for right to knows. I had noticed that. So you'll see a corresponding, I would say, lack of increase for the solicitor. And that's how I think we're trying to track things in that regard to at least know what we're dealing with.
What does that cost us in past years?
About 15,000 to 20,000. That's just solicitor fees on right to know. I mean, you have a staff that spends an inordinate amount of time fulfilling right to know requests as well. That's just part of our salaries, but it consumes an incredible amount of time.
It's been pretty consistent the past few years, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it comes down to, I would call it tagging, but there's project names we'll.
Yeah, so we have a project for right to know.
Project called right to know, and so that's where that number comes from.
Right. But now, right, but we have to run a special report to show you that this is gonna show up on your monthly year-to-date budget number report.
So there is a, you know, a basis for it.
We've been tracking it for a while, just not on a ledger account.
So a lot of the other items in 409, we're dealing with telephones, computer software licenses that we have. And a lot of the insurances that we're, again, we're kinda basing on what we've experienced and.
Those numbers are provided for us by Skip Hockley.
What we get from Skip. Yeah. Some of yours has attracted attention. I agree here.
You basically kept electricity and gas the same. I don't know if that's gonna be realistic.
Yep. Well, it looks like gas, we had a kind of already increased to address it compared to usage, but I would agree that.
They're talking 8% for gas.
Natural gas, yeah.
In, over the winter heating.
Natural gas in particular is gonna be very rough this year.
The umbrella. It, not the umbrella.
I might have to look. I don't know how to explain inland marine off the top of my head.
What commercial umbrella insurance?
Well, that's different than inland marine. I, I'd have to.
Oh, gosh. Inland marine, this is when we went through with.
Yeah.
Skip, when we had issues with this insurance rate a few years ago, and we had to, you know, look at other options. And inland, inland marine covers such an odd assortment of things.
Yeah, I'd have to look it up.
Oh, it's, it's.
It kinda covers things that, yeah, kinda covers the things that aren't, don't have another place for home to be covered. I mean, just on the highway side, certain equipment is covered under inland marine because it doesn't power itself and drive down the road. So it can't be on the automotive policy, so it ends up on the inland marine policy. When we were insuring things out at the rec park pavilions. They're not buildings. But they had to be covered somewhere. They were on inland marine. It's a very, anything that's odd kinda ends up in that category.
Thank you. Yeah.
It's not a really good way to describe it. It's kinda how it works.
Yeah, Skip explained it a few years ago, but I couldn't replicate that explanation. At the end of the day.
I thought maybe it had something to do with Robbie's crew was down near in the Tiber or something, and there was water involved with it. That's what I was thinking.
We have a fleet.
But usually, a marine is different than marina. Marina's on land, and marina's on water.
Gas and electric kinda scare me, though, cuz I don't, I think that's gonna, if we hold those numbers, we're gonna be way under budget.
What would you like to see?
Well, they just said in the news the other day, the heating season, you can expect homeowners to pay 8% to 10% more than they did last year. If temperatures stay the same. So I, you know, just gas alone, sounds like we oughta up that somewhere in the 5% to 8% range and hope for the best.
That's actually the note I made this morning. I made that same note this morning.
And, you know, even though people in DC think everything's gonna go green, it's gonna be powered by electric and the demand's gonna go up, so is the price. Doesn't take a rocket scientist, and obviously, there's none of them in the Washington area.
So if we put that up around 5,500, that would be.
That's where I would put the gas bill.
Eight percent plus a little padding.
5,500 is a round number. But yeah, I'm also very conscious of that right now.
I'm gonna keep it a 350 this year.
5,500 it is. You wanna do electricity the same way?
I would.
I would, too.
Yeah, we might as well. Right, it's been, I mean, we've spent several years right on the cusp of 30,000. It probably oughta be a little higher than that.
Number you like?
Thirty five, 32.5.
All right. Done.
How much did the water and sewer rates go up this year, Chris? Do you know?
What's that?
Water and sewer rates increasing.
The average that we always do.
A few percent.
Huh?
A few percent.
We always do.
I know, one one year, one the other, yeah.
And it's always pretty low. Less than five, I would think. For about five.
Stormwater is a set number. Are we okay with our repair and maintenance on buildings? We're not anticipating anything intense?
What's on Brickyard Alley?
For stormwater.
It's a parcel we own. That's a Depper question.
It's based on impervious surface area, so I'd have to look up and see what that is, but I'm assuming it's probably based on maybe four ERUs because the cost on there, but I'd have to definitely look that up. And I know the Borough owns, and between us and Robbie's group, I think, like six or seven parcels that would get billed for stormwater.
On Brickyard Alley? She means total, but I, I'm trying to place Brickyard Alley.
It runs behind Broadway, between the Battlefield and Broadway.
By the tennis, moment's bird, by the tennis courts and goes back to Smith Alley.
What do we own there?
The alley.
The alley itself?
I guess.
Yeah, so I can look it up in the stormwater system and.
Yeah, that might be interesting to know.
Double check the impervious area, cuz we do have those calculations and I can let you know.
Thank you.
I can email.
Everything else kinda makes sense.
We would pay stormwater on one alley and nothing else. That seems weird. So it's gotta be about a property, right?
Should be, and it should be a pretty large area, that number, cuz our minimum is .5, which is $50.
Maybe it's a portion of the soccer field?
There's a wellhead out there, but that should be a GMA property unless.
You mean over on the other side of Crowell Street?
Well, it's at the end of Brickyard Alley and Crowell Street. It's an odd shape.
Yeah, okay.
But.
It doesn't go across.
That should be GMA. That shouldn't be us. Unless it's one of those old deals where the Borough owned the land and left the water company grow. company grow well.
Yeah, will you let us know what that is?
Yeah, absolutely.
Super interesting. Okay. I think that brings us to a stopping point this evening. 409, 373 is where we'll pick up. I think that's where I go to public comment. There is none. And we adjourn to executive session.